is aware of diversity, this means the individual differences. It's numbers. It doesn't mean that we have equity. Equity comes with the creation of opportunities for historically underserved marginalized populations. We want to make sure they have access and have all the resources they need to be successful. How they define success. Inclusion is the active intentional and ongoing engagement with diversity in the curriculum and in communities. There's intellectual, social, cultural, and geographical inclusion. In essence, we want our diverse populations at the table, in the classroom, appreciated, heard, valued, and their voices, whatever they had to add to the conversation. Part of the change that is ongoing in higher education and at Y S U. I looked at the data and I looked at the two twenty twelve cohort. The graduation rates for underrepresented and marginalized identity students. It it's low. It's not even double digits. What surprised me is we do a balance of enrollment. So enrollment hasn't really fluctuated great in a great deal. The first to second year persistence in five years has maintained at a sixty percent rate for African American students, higher for other underrepresented students. So for the last five years, the persistence rate.
Attention.
Retention rate from first to second year for African American students maintains at sixty percent. Other underrepresented students hovers around eighty to ninety percent. It's when they get to the third year that that persistence drops. It also when it comes time to graduation, you see lower numbers. And I use persistence rather than retention because we want our students to persist. We just don't want to retain them. We want to make sure that they're involved in student government and all the activities that are going on on campus and engaged, not only in the classroom, but academic senate, academic senate, they know what's going on on campus. They know their political power, their wealth, if you will. Hispanic, Latino, Indian, South Islanders, and American Indian, and there's unspecified group. And the data that I used came from institutional research. They were able to help me put that, those numbers into grasp where I could better understand it. I do apologize. I like qualitative data. So I have, yes, did you have? Um, so I've spent my first semester, fall semester, talking with students about their experiences and I have met students that are no longer attending Y S U. I've spoken to them. They may be at other institutions about their experience here. So it helps me to see from a student lens of what our strengths are, what our weaknesses But the bright spot is we're addressing challenges. We understand that our underrepresented students lack connectedness. So I've put a team together of how can we do that? How can we connect students to campus? Student Affairs does it, but every other area on campus should be engaging in building this community of students where they're not feeling like they're an outsider. We're providing financial resources. Scholarships have increased from thirty to there's roughly fifty-four scholarships that underrepresented populations can apply for. We have a four-year, well, we're collecting for a four-year social justice scholarship for Youngstown students. And that to me is really enterprising because we're engaging the community and saying we value civic engagement, we value those young people who are giving their try to the community. So this is reward, come to Y S U, further engage and get your degree. We are addressing food insecurities. So we understand that there is social problems that students come college with that we can't handle. But we're trying. So students do understand that we have a food pantry on campus. Weekly, biweekly, they're given information on where they can pick up food packages and when, and these items usually last a week or a bit longer. We're also committed to having a gender, a women and genders resource center. Under VP Eddie Howard at Student Affairs, they have began working with the community, community of counselors, legal aid, because life happens for our students. Maybe if we could buy a resource where they can connect to services that we don't have, their college experience will be better for for them and for us. We're also looking at additional resources through grants, the TRIO grant and other federal grants, and hopefully developing, not only, we don't talk about just for African American students, but this is low income, first generation, underrepresented students where we're creating a foundation for them. And when that foundation has other, if you will, offices we can direct students to, they will feel more comfortable here. So it's not just siloing students into certain programs. We don't want to do that, but we want to provide a connection for them. Our mentoring and transition programs have been revamped and reorganized to meet the needs of our first year students. Our assistive staff, faculty members have volunteered and participated in these programs. And it's just, we understand that there's a difference between high school and college. Students will say it's the same, it's not, because no one tells them what to do, how to do it, but our mentors, who have years of experience with higher education, can express to them what they need to be in the classroom, if there's a problem and they demand to go to the president, how to approach the president, how to speak with the president, because there is a way. We engage them in a way where we understand there's a different organization on campus and we encourage them to join those organizations, join those groups. And we also serve as that cheerleader, if you will. So we see the best and the bright brightest out of them where they don't see it for themselves and no one has ever told them. So that is our challenge. We have educational opportunities, not only for our students, but staff and faculty. And they've been developed to engage our campus at issues that not only face society as a whole, but directly impacts our institution and our students. These opportunities offer staff and faculty insight on issues of D E I and how we can personally address them through our work. Our challenge has been COVID nineteen and I know no one wants to hear that because you've heard, you hear it continuously. From, because that, our meetings have been canceled, but we're on track now. We do everything virtually. We actually prepared in thirty words for our Plan A and our Plan B. Our Plan B was virtual and we were ready to go, not only with recruiting of students for our program, but how we engage faculty. Over the summer, they had opportunities to learn more about D E I, virtual equity, higher education equity. I still have recordings of those webinars and those conferences and we're going to use those in the classroom. We've also been given a challenge and in that challenge, an action plan and team development has been proposed. So we build a foundation where diversity, equity, and inclusion at Y S U is consistent and transparent. We need to think about what Y S U is and where we want Y S U to be. Now, connected to this is strategic initiative. They can be framed for every college on campus. We have five colleges that can use this plan. And we're hoping that this plan will increase the number of diverse students and aid in their persistence to graduation. There are four areas. One is recruitment and retention that includes students and staff. Recruitment of students, specifically underrepresented students, and aiding in access outreach efforts for underrepresented students, including through college partnerships and development of TRIO programs. We want, in our office, we want to develop a forty-six week full summer program. The research tells us that summer programs, academic institute, help students persist. It gives them a connectedness to campus, to faculty, to staff, and it makes them feel like they belong. We want to make sure that we have faculty and staff that want to be here. So recruitment and retention strategies for underrepresented staff and faculty include new partnerships with the four-year institutions that might offer best the baccalaureate degree. And having those students come for our masters, possibly PhD work, and give them experience in the classroom. There are several institutions that partner with historical black colleges and universities looking for the best comprehensive or example STEM English and post-docs with the intention of employment once the post-docs end. We have to look at campus climate and culture, campus climate and culture. How we're doing things, how we're marketing our programs, how student organizations are invading with diversity. So is that, we will offer D E I training and education to every student on the nation on campus, every college on campus who is interested in, I've had conversations at this point, what does diversity mean for them and how it looks, not only on paper, but in the classroom. And I want to say that it's hard work because you can't, you can't do D E I in one basket. You have to break it apart. You have to look at this historical, political, social aspects, and that's what we're trying to engage people in and looking at the history of things. I'm a historian, that's what my education is, so I like to go back a hundred and fifty years to see what it was in the beginning and how we got here. And that's what I try to do. And some of our programs will be not only a semester long, but a year long because honestly, you can have a topic and that topic can go on forever when you discuss it because there's parts to it that we don't know, just find out. It's like history, when you find out a piece of history, you have to add that to the puzzle. You're not rewriting, you're just adding to the story. We need to be engaged in community outreach and engagement. So retention of underrepresented students, students of color, first generation, low income, LGBTQ students, students including, sorry, including student support efforts, student engagement, like Ebbestore fostered a sense of law in the community. That means that we're reaching out to our community partners. We are in the heart, almost the heart of the city, so we have to look at what is going on in the city and we have students from other places, how they connect to young staff. And that means that we're developing and enhancing our community relations. It's a lot of talking, a lot of getting to know people from here. And I started that with several groups from Pitty Wells of Southern to N W A C P to the Action Committee Anti-Racism Group. And I tried to make myself available and I address these things with students so they can get involved.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Actually, the question on persistence. When, when I'm thinking as we went through the strategic planning and I might remember the formula, but persistence, the reality is, is what happens along the way.
Yes.
And the ultimate, it's kind of like the difference between a leading indicator and a lagging indicator, persistence being a leading indicator. And if I don't persist, I could then get to graduation, graduation being the ultimate lagging outcome. And am I, am I thinking about that right? And, and, and back to that point, the percentages that we heard about persistence seem grand, I don't, I don't mean that in a, in a facetious way, but seem grand compared to the ultimate on the graduation rate. And, and so I know you have to address persistence before you can get to graduation rate. And we, through the strategic planning and talk, and we know that this is a major initiative that the university is focusing on, but back to that one and especially for our new members, you know, when we look at the most recent or the, the, the current I P A Ts report, as a university, we may, we may have numbers that we're struggling and trying to improve and trying to get better on with seventeen percent in four years and forty percent at six years, but when you look at the various minority groups, and of course, the one that has the worst performing, performing indicator is around African American students here at Y S U, which is only eleven percent. So, so surely something along that way, the things you're talking about may seem, they may sound soft, they may sound, you know, not necessarily strategic, they may sound whatever it may be, but the reality is, is that this is critical if we're ever going to change that number, because to only have eleven percent of the African Americans that come to this university gradually, and that's what we're here for, that's, that's the reason we exist, is, is, is really concerning. So, and it's not that some of the others, I mean, you know, I'll use the Asian minority population, it's eighty-three percent. They do better here at Youngstown State University than they do all of our comparison group universities. And yet, for African Americans, it's eleven compared to forty-two and, and those other institutions. So I just can't emphasize how important this is to get this right. And, you know, and I know you've got to put some of the pushing around it first to get the buy-in and the support and to get, you know, company on board, to get, you know, the entire administrative leadership team on board, you know, for us as a board to be on board. I know you have to do all those things, but I can't emphasize the critical part because we're never going to get what we would be getting as a diversity of our overall numbers and we've got people lagging behind on that. And so it's, 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 we've got to do what we have to do to get, get that up and get to a better graduation.
Trust you, Seels, I appreciate that and I agree with you. The research tells us that the soft, the soft initiatives are really important because now researchers are not looking at academic careers. And while that is important and it is an indicator of persistence and indicator of graduation, it is that social aspect that students off the site from leaving. It is financial, it is lack of resources, it is, I will give an example of the University of Missouri and Truman State University where I'm both associated with. Students look at University of Missouri, multiple millions of dollars of resources where students, they won't be homeless, they won't be hungry, they can get to class, they have resources for books. Truman State University does not have that because it's rural America. And they will transfer because that school has done a great job in saying, we will take care of them. And oftentimes, we look at higher educations like that's not our job of taking care of students, but we do have to take care of our students.
Thank you. So to that point, what percentage, that forty percent, leaves to go to another institution?
That is why I don't have currently. We are worried, well, one of the initiatives is to get better data of what happens to our students that leave. We know that there is a percentage that go, that will transfer to other institutions. We know that there's a percentage that will complete a college degree, but I don't have that data.
So, so Vice President Chairman has a lot of data. You know, actually, if you look at our old student body, the number is much worse, it's jarring, but if you cut this off at six years, sixteen percent of our students aren't here, but you know, as, as Vice President Chairman has, you know, has found out, it's really not that they're leaving here to go somewhere else. There are a lot of students that are in good standing and so, and they just laugh. And it's, you know, we don't have exit surveys, there's some ways. You know, I like the soft thing if I, if I put it for a moment, you know, try to understand what, what this work is, this diversity, inclusion, if I can just kind of give some depth, then we expect to be better. So I'll go home and my wife has had a bad day at work, she works a lot, it's over thirty years. She works for, I said nothing, but she's worked a lot, she's been sad. And it's been a bad day, so I'll come in and I'll say, I've had a bad day. And so I was supposed to explain what it was, I'll say, well, what you need to do is, I'll start telling. And, and, and then all of a sudden, she looks at me like it's worse than what it was before. You know, I'm trying to help, I'm saying I'm helping, but it's making it worse. Well, why is that? And, and so I, I think that's the nature of, of human emotion, really. You know, I, I say there's, there's some group causes of anger and we're all up here are, are, you know, pain and frustration. So what happens with our minority students is we say, come to Y S U, we care, we care about you. And then they get here and they can't figure out how to go off the path. And they, they run into all these roadblocks, they have faculty that don't understand their challenges. It all comes down to the soft side of their relationship. In order for the institution to care, we have to, just like what I don't do with my wife, you have to listen. And so that's why the challenge that we have is moving faculty and staff and students in a position where we can listen to each other, understand those things that are, are the roadblocks, so we can make a difference. And so, mine is absolutely correct. The number of minority students that leave, is that acceptable? But if you solve the riddle of helping those students, you help all students, because the secret is showing that you care.
And to answer your question, I, I do know for the retention programs, fifty percent of the students that come into those programs will leave for another institution. Because we don't have brief life for them, we don't have a party life for them, we don't have, and it's, you know, as someone that's older, I, I look at it as like, oh, is that really important? But I think about when I was eighteen and a college freshman and that is kind of important. It was important in the eighties and it's important now.
Well, I, I also think that, you know, if you look at the, the survey of the National Student Engagement Survey, that the latest report of that actually also showed that areas that we rated the lowest in, well, for all the students, was this relationship kind of there again. So it's, you know, having discussions with people from different economic backgrounds other than your own, you know, forming a new idea and understanding it from, you know, that perspective and working with it, interacting with other students to help you understand the questions, where your discussions with people of a race or an ethnicity other than your own in our society, particularly today, is so, what's the word I want to use? Fractured, thank you, fractured, that's a great word, is so fractured in a university environment of all environments. It's an opportunity to help people learn together, hunt together, experience different relationships. The experience is equally as important as the learnings that they walk away with in the end, because that's what's proven in them. And yet, when we look at our, our numbers, we are, we are lower in those areas. So, so it's, it is related, you know, in the, in the act of showing and building the relationship, things that, that show you care, that will feed across the university and, and create those opportunities for more integration, dialogue, discussion, and so forth, and that will strengthen all. So I think it is related.
So, so, I'm just going to add, one of the things I think is also critically important is this, I mean, that's critically important, but I'm closer to the mic. One of the things I thought that I think is critically important on initiatives that we're talking about this, we also need to agree on what care looks like. And, you know, we have discussions about getting here, but as a community, we need to agree, agree on what that care looks like. What does the support look like? What does the program look like? And then we can't have kind of these disjointed approaches. It needs to be a kind of community approach that we all agree that this is the direction we're going to go. And I think that's one of the areas that we need to make sure we focus on and we have agreed consent on how we're going to go forward with diversion, inclusion, and for our students.
And what is really great, and what is really working, right, is that every single aspect, every university, qualifications, you know, commitment, efficiency, to financial support, to student activities, to, you know, the academic, teaching, all those things, academic instruction, all those things, it will be coming from every area and you're right, we need to coordinate, base together and create the right experience.
And, and here's the thing. Having a PhD is a great thing. I'll flee next year. But it does not prepare you for the college classroom. It does not prepare you to teach. So many of my colleagues are telling me they didn't know that they had to be such a social support for their students. That's where it has changed higher education, where you as professor, you as financial aid advisor, you're going to hear some stories. And if you work closely with D E I, the staff in D E I can help you prepare for the things that you hear or be that office that you call and say, this student just said to me, can you explain? And I've had to explain conversations before of what a student meant, because D E I is also that place where they come to and they'll explain what's going on in their family. And we often will tell, tell students, when you come to our office, be ready for questions, be ready for some uncomfortable conversations, because if you need our help, we need to know your story. And that story may be one where they have suppressed of, I don't need the help, my family's okay, but we find out that there's some things that's going on where we have to refer them to county service, we have to refer them to other offices. And if we are walking them to that office, that student is saying, Provo Smith must be the guy, because Carol would not send me to someone that's not going to help me. And that's kind of the plus. When we talk about an agreed consent of what this work is, some people won't under, won't have a foundational understanding of what the work is. And that's why we have to give staff and faculty some educational opportunity to learn and ask questions of us. This is not about race and gender only, it is about social nomic status, it's the physicality of people, religion, sexual orientation, gender. We have to put our biases aside of what we think, you know, is the norm. And take that deep breath for, for those of us that are parents when our children come to us, take that deep breath. And take that deep breath for, for those of us that are parents when our children come to us, take that deep breath, listen. And after they go, it's like, that's when you scream, you know, let, as my father said, don't let them see you sweat. And they think, wow, you're wonderful, you can really get me. And that's what's, and when you call people, just say, hey, I need help. That's D E I.
We have data that shows that we pair two, uh, some institutions.
As related to?
As related to some, uh, actually assistance.
We do, oh.
I, I, I know we need to matter, I just don't know where to, where to, where to, where to. Our competitive severance.
There is data, um.
So it slipped my mind, um, at the June meeting aligned with the budget proposal, there was a printout of my head report that compares us against a cohort of institutions that Y S U previously identified as peer institutions. Um, so we can maybe place a time in a future meeting to review that more specifically and more correctly, given this conversation. But tremendous amount of data that we're all discussing exists and will be available.
And I think it's really the combination of the two, the I P S report and the National Student Engagement Report. And between those two, we really do get Ivan and his total sense of how important, how we feel. I think, I think, every day they're saying he was great, well, the activities that you do are very promising, I really do. So my expertise is healthcare, it's just maybe different ways. When we have a problem that seems unsolvable, first you have to identify what's the root cause of that process. You need to get it on people. And so in our perspective, you have to study the issue, compare it wherever you want to, but study our issue here and then you have to have actionable items, specific actionable items, try to solve it, track it, change it, and you check that cycle. And sometimes we do make assumptions, and all these thoughts, they were great, but my concern is are they actionable items? We've got to involve folks that it's impacting. So from our perspective, in our quality metrics, if we're having patient fall wherever else, we have the patience to engage in those discussions. We think we know it was a very holistic society, healthcare lab. We think we know it's best, turned out we don't. And so, so we really have to study the issue here at the university and put together, here are the five things and the dedicated dollars and whatever else, and even the metrics we're gonna follow. I guess in my mind, I don't know why we could be, we'd be off base, that's something we probably didn't help to solve a problem that seems random and nebulous, you gotta kind of put it in the box.
Well, and, and thank you. That was my question. The, the data to me, are we doing an interview? So what percentage of those that we didn't retain, right? Finding out specifically what are the reasons that they left the university?
Are we doing, are we doing that?
So, so off on my guess, so you may recall a report last year called the history analysis. So for the first time last year, we reviewed through institutional research, the financial aid, first art models, with everybody, individuals who were enrolled in a previous fall, not enrolled in the next fall. Then we sliced the dice, all of that into, did they graduate? Are they still here? Completed, continuing, what happened to the rest? Then we aggregated and subdivided that into, uh, are they gone because of academic misconduct? Are they gone because of, uh, uh, some other categories of things linked to academic performance? Did they have a two point O or higher that would suggest they otherwise should have continued? Then we analyzed whether the financial circumstances associated with those who have not continued. I forget exactly the numbers, but very few transferred somewhere else who did not continue were academically eligible to continue with no hold of any type. Very few went to some other institution. So our notion that people leave here to go somewhere else is very, very false. And then the question is, is why? The Bankland Service Center, through the registrar, reaches out, contacts every student who draws. And to a great extent, we reach out to those who need and attempt to find out why did you leave? Very few respond with why. But of those who respond, almost to a person, it's financial, it's family circumstances, or I ran out of seed. It's almost never they ran out of support from us, because we offer a lot of support. What we did with those data then was with provosts and the deans, the deans to be advisors. They then took all of those students and started looking through the records to determine what might be some common issues that reflect from a student's transfer, a program of study, where a roadblock went in, where a milestone course might have gotten away. You know, what, what can we see qualitatively, the aggregate of these, these types of circumstances or sequence of steps? The deans have summarized that and are working with the provost, as I understand it. And now the provost with the new chairs have started working on what they've discovered. And the deans and the chairs and the advisors have done remarkable job. Every time we've done that type of analysis and reached out to that level to say, what can you discover that we can fix or find a barrier we can reduce? Help students make progress towards completion. So, uh, I think there is a lot of really, really good work in terms of scoring analytics. There's a lot of good, uh, collaboration on slicing and dicing the data in a very informative way. And there's a lot of collaboration across campus to do something about, uh, the next, that just started moving last year.
When Claire gets here, she could talk about a three-year grant application. Part of, part of it is this, and then aside is this, uh, resources for students, uh, with recent attention. So it's that, well, then also, this actually, if you can other way, it's not one thing. And then, so, discuss where's, first year program that also mentioned the financial outstanding.
Yeah, so Rusty Ryan asked about other initiatives linked to student success, so please.
So the student success seminar is changing in a way where, um, we are providing the resources, um, for students. I teach a section of it and for my group, and I think everyone else is, is doing the same. We start with, this is your campus, these are your resources. Let's talk about that first before we talk about how to prepare for your spring semester. How do you prepare for your four years at Y S U? So they get information from the county center, um, the, um, disability services, other resources, and individuals from those offices will speak to students in, in the classroom. Uh, today, I'm not in the classroom, but my students, they're going over a review of what are the resources if this happens to you on campus, where are you going to go? Um, and also we will have at least, uh, thirty minutes each semester that I'm talking with students, mandatory. They can come anytime. I'm in my office, their, uh, their mentor, their advisor is in their office, but I'm requiring them to see them. Uh, that's what I know, that's my experience in talk. And some students may not need me. But others may have a long list of things that are going on that we have to tackle. And that helps them. So it is that softness. I want to also address the other thing. Yes, students, uh, I want to bring students to the table, because this involves them. So they, they can help us get to the root problem. So the action teams that, uh, I'm proposing will have students also, uh, that are engaged in this work. And it also, I think it's great when maybe the president or someone in administration calls you, we want to hear from you. That may be the impetus for them to go into certain careers.
No, I, I was just gonna make a comment, time, time effort and, um, and resources, both financial and, and so forth. The time effort and resources, um, when, you know, excuse me, before getting on the board, when I talk to many students and many of them, of course, help your students try to get through the process and so forth. The, the issue that, uh, actually happened truly was a running out of resources. I mean, what parent says, okay, I want you to go to college to get your degree for the next six years or eight years? You know, no one does, right? We always expect our child to go to school and get finished in four years. And I would have you, but I told mine, when your four years is up, you're on your own, you know? Well, the first time they can't get a class, they can't get into this class, but I have to have this before I can take this, before I can take that. It throws them off a whole nother semester. And, and so that, you know, that's the running out of steam is that's the resource that, um, in many ways we have to provide, because they can't solve that, a student can't solve that, we are can't solve that. But we have to figure that out and solve that for them. But the first time that happens, it throws them behind. Now the money's run out, the mom's not paying, it passed forty years, because I'm on my own after that. And, you know, now I'm trying to work and do this at the same time. But, you know, it's, it really is, it's running out of steam, but that steam is time, effort, and resources, financial resources. So thank you, this has been great.
I also want to, um, say we need to be wary when we compare ourselves to other institutions. Um, I've looked at some of our peer institutions, Austin P being one of them, um, they have a military campus also. And Fort Campbell, Fort Knox, I have a community with one, but Austin P has an extension there. Those numbers at that extension count for their overall numbers. So there's always military personnel enrolled in classes. Um, they have children that will enroll into Austin P that can increase their number. So they're not really dependent on, we, we're going to recruit national or we're going to recruit in Memphis. They have a great population where they do, um, they're able to recruit diverse students. So we don't know that. We don't know the resources unless we know that, that campus and our colleagues at that campus. Because we actually talk to one another about what's going on. Um, so I, I look at that, it's like, just let's be wary, um, you know, if one school is doing better, then they may have additional resources that we don't have.
Eleven percent, you're forty-two percent. That's, and you're talking about multiples of that.
I agree, and it's worthy.
I, I was gonna add one last comment, and I think probably goes back to my original comment that I was talking about, about the consent piece. We can't expect students, we, you know, it takes four to five years for a student to get a degree in accounting, whatever. We can't expect students to approach a person with inclusion in the semester. It's, it's the whole process, and Carol and I talked about that before. You have to think about it from a whole list, that this is gonna be a four-year track, right? We're gonna be working with the student from the time of freshman until they graduate, don't we? When they leave, they leave here with their mind understanding and more educated about diversity and inclusion. The other part of that is, uh, is we're critical that we look at that, that eleven percent and trying to pull that number up. But the person that they're sitting next to in the classroom also need to have their diversity, inclusion, and education. Because as much as we can support the student of color, then other students that are sitting in the classroom, that affects how that student's gonna be able to succeed or not. And so if they're not being, um, pushed and prodded in regards to their thought process, in regards to what they're thinking, then we miss the boat. Like, we gotta educate most students. When I survey my student parents, I do that for all students, regardless of what, 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 what they come from. And so making sure that we provide support for those students who critically need it, but also making sure that we have things in place that challenge the person that's next to them in the classroom, because that's gonna affect probably if I'm not successful or not as well. And we can't lose sight of that. It's, it's kind of my one.
That's what D E I is. Um, if you take, take the equity piece. Every student doesn't need the same resources. That's what equity is. So it may look like we are doing more for one group of students. But if your parents are doctors, lawyers, wealthy, what we call wealthy, you may not need the scholarship. You may not need the additional time and support that comes from the center for student progress, because your parents provided you with the tutors, with the academic resources. Look two, we will provide you educational opportunities so you understand the world you live in. It's gonna be challenging, and as we ask our students to be challenged in their education, we have to be willing to be challenged. And having those conversations. So when we talk about historically underrepresented students, the students from a wealthy area will understand the historical impact of education on that group. Why do they lag? Why are they getting this extra help? And then maybe something in them will change to see this from a different perspective of, no. These students belong here, they've just been forgotten about. And that's part of our work. We're gonna, we're gonna give all our students that opportunity to learn and grow. But we are not going to be as intrusive to young students. Because we don't want that student to walk away. I don't want a student going to Provost Smith and say, you know what, she's, she's really annoying now. But she's always asking me if I'm okay. Um, and we have those students that will do that. So listening to our students, providing the resources that they need, including them in our decision-making. Be very transparent about why decisions have been made. So a student can know why we did X, Y, and Z, and if they choose to challenge that, and they come with, with a plan, we have to listen.
Oh, and he said, this is a slant of comment, but I have one, I have one comment. Claire talks often about the fact that we need to create the environment that people really want to be here.
Yes.
And that's a combination of that care factor, a combination of some of those administrative things that we could do better. It's a combination of a lot of different things. I don't want it to be lost on the end of this discussion. That, uh, when Carol talked about, she's got sixty faculty engaged in being trained how to make sure that we can have that environment for everyone so that they really want to be here, they believe this is where they can succeed. And, uh, to me, that's been a great indicator, because the one place we know our students are, or at least we hope they are, is in class. And so that's the place number one that we can get better at all these things. Whether it's the administrative roadblocks, or the, do they really care about me roadblocks, or I ask some questions roadblocks, or whatever. I'm, I'm important as anyone else? Uh, I think that's critical. And the only other thing that, uh, I don't think Carol and Provost mentioned is that Provost just invested in five graduate assistants being assigned to Carol's area to just get a larger workforce working on many, many of these things that we need and better.
So the five graduate assistants, they, um, they will be liaisons to each college. Uh, we haven't assigned them to a, a college yet, but everyone's working on their plan. And that plan is going to be intersecting. So you have the graduate assistant who can So you have the graduate assistant who can motivate students, get students involved, do some of the, I call it, in school later, it goes on while we're teaching or doing the other administrative things that we're doing, and that's really important. It's also important that they see someone closer to their age. I'm old, um, and a lot of students, students don't want to talk to someone who is my age, because I don't get it, I don't understand or something. So when they're talking to someone in their twenties, who may have just finished their undergraduate degree, they're seeing the same thing I'm saying, the same thing that Professor Tressel from OCP is saying, but it's a fresher face, a younger face, and, uh, they also serve as that connection to us.
Thank you, are there any other questions? And the other question? Thank you very much. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to the OCP guy, to say, for our future. I'll again remind everybody that we're remaining socially distanced in the room. It is difficult to hear us when we're wearing our masks, however, we're not making social division to be placing our masks on, okay? So if anybody has any concerns or questions about that, um, Mike, am I gonna go to you?
Uh, yes, ma'am, myself and my colleagues are now, I want to talk about the plan. You have this in your materials, and it's now streaming for a guest to observe. We thought it would be appropriate to take a little bit of time, interact with the board from the perspective of, what are we doing this year relative to implementing the plan? Because we need to implement the plan you approved in June. But we also need to set the stage, as you indicated in the survey results, and as was indicated when you endorsed the plan at the last meeting, that we need to seriously consider this institution's future state, sustainability, vibrancy, vitality. So this presentation is basically to give you a sense of, we've got it this year with regard to implementing the plan, but we want to engage the board this year with a big picture discussion of the future of this institution and its sustainability. As you know, we've often used Venn diagrams to illustrate how we're gonna hit the bullseye. But before we go there, you'll recall that for several years, we've looked at the institution from this perspective. The center of the universe, our students and our academic programs. The rest of the institution's universe exists to enable and stimulate the success of our center of the universe. And we've used this illustration many times in interacting with deans and chairs and others, the president even at a state university address, to talk about and think through our roles and our responsibilities. And you'll see that as we discuss, uh, the collaborations that exist across the leadership of the institution as we go through this presentation. You'll recall that when the board endorsed the plan, it endorsed the perspective that our purposes are, as a university of opportunity, to inspire individuals, to enhance futures, and to enrich lives. Three major items hit the bullseye. We've articulated we will do that by a relentless and robust, real bust and laser-like focus on student futures and lifelong learning, research distinction and discovery of knowledge, and collective impact with the region. We've articulated consistently that if we get this right, our graduates will be citizens of the world, and because of the experiences they have, they'll be engaged in their work, they'll be engaged in their community, and they'll be white and proud, they'll know why I am proud, and they'll know why, what makes them proud. Obviously, the Office of Academic Affairs plays a huge role in getting this right. Provost Smith?
Thank you, Vice President Sherman. Um, you know, part of our, uh, of learning our identity is fleshing out kind of what our brand is, so to speak. There's more on that later, but if you look at, at, at the slide, really, at the starting point, we really have some agreement that this is what we're about, we inspire individuals to have future and enrich lives. And so, as we cross on the next slide, each slide is gonna get a little more specific. So we go from the really conceptual down to things that are more specific, and Vice President Sherman pointed out, um, it's really these student features and, and lifelong learning that we use to inspire individuals. Research distinction and discovery of knowledge, that speaks to, uh, teaching in the classroom, to get students engaged in, in, in research. These things inspire students to reach higher. And really, our students, our staff, our faculty also enrich lives. We also inspire the community, the community inspires us. And so we feel that that's the starting point for a collective impact with the region. So now, as we flip to the next slide, you'll see what's, what's happening as we're taking what's on the right-hand side, fleshing that out a little more. So when we look at student features and lifelong learning, uh, we have to understand what our majors are, what our programs are. You're probably aware, uh, that in the strategic plan, that our general education transformation and redesign is so important. And that's why, it's these academic programs that, that serve to inspire our students. And you'll notice that the Academic Senate plays the primary role in, in that development. And we're beginning, uh, that, that process now, working with the Senate. So, we also know that learning outcomes are so specific, we, are so important. We measure learning outcomes for undergraduates, for our graduates, and that's how we know if we're reading, reaching our goals or not, our academic goals. Also, we're gonna go through a process of measuring our impact with the community. So we're gonna gather data about what are we doing now, and, and what areas do we need to refocus and do a little more. So, uh, in education, uh, and, and, and health. So, also, our Education Training Center, or ETC, which a lot of you know a, a little bit about, and you'll hear more about that, uh, later in the, in the meeting, uh, we're, we're focusing on workforce development. And so we're channeling the talent that we have and the research capability that, that we have of offering our opportunities to, uh, our, our, our business partners, our, our, our starting businesses, and just really the workforce in general to ramp up their skills to be employable. And so that's how, uh, as we drill a little deeper, we feel that, uh, this is, is how we're supporting our brand. Okay, so, uh, by identifying high-impact practices, uh, and then, of course, development is so important. And so a major focus of thrust of what we're doing is, uh, meeting now regularly with, with our new chairpersons, uh, helping everyone understand the role that we need to carry out to fulfill the plan. And also, um, our Institute for Teaching and Learning, you'll see ITL slash ACT. And so we're continuing to stand up the Institute for Teaching and Learning, they're playing a major role uh, in, in helping us develop the areas we need to act with, the Academic New P team. And they were fully responsible for helping us move online. So we had a large portion of faculty that said, you know, I don't know the tools, I don't know the, the, the methods, and they were right there to help. We heard earlier from diversity, equity, and, uh, and inclusion in this role of, of, of helping us be responsive to those things that are important to underserved groups. And, uh, the interplay between curricular and extracurricular integration is so important. We don't live a life in a classroom, we all with, we, we all sort of time in a classroom. That's not where we live our life, and students shouldn't either. That integration is so very important. So all of these are building those competencies, capabilities, and capacities that are so important.
So, so with that, um, and before we start, before we leave the ACT, I'm gonna say, just a little correction. On pages three and four, where you have, uh, research distinction and discovery of knowledge, that really should be academic distinction.
Oh, right.
Okay, and so it's correct on page two, in your little thing with the arrows. But on pages three and four, that really should read, read academic distinction. This doesn't want to work.
Good catch, that's why it says draft. As many times as we look at this, someone didn't, we didn't notice that. Thank you.
Did it go now? So, so part of, uh, Brian was, was talking about as we lead into the extracurricular and curriculum experience, the integration piece, I'm gonna take this little point of privilege and talk specifically about how I see that happen. When I came to Youngstown State University, I came here looking to lead the Division of Student Affairs. And one of the positions that, and before I got here, the president had already looked at, looking at student affairs differently. And to be honest with you, I understand this because he's my boss, I'm saying this because I truly honestly believe it. It really helped me to redefine my student affairs approach. Because it's really not about the affairs of students, it's not about the service we provide to students. Because you can look at it from a service delivery standpoint, it's really about the student's overall experience. And so I really began to embrace the idea of looking at the student experience as a whole. Because the student experience is where you can affect all the things you're talking about. You can be about the affairs of students, you can serve students, but you gotta be collectively thinking about the overall experience of students. And so as I take that lens, even though when I, my college changed to my student affairs, I still remember the importance of the overall student experience. Because within the student experience, we can create all the things we're talking about. So I got busy thinking about how we can create an overall, the best experience for students as possible. And we start doing that through what we call our core values, that really tie into everything that we're talking about today, which is helping students to create a sense of belonging, so their experience will be better. Helping students to understand the importance of inclusion, so their experience will be better. Helping them to understand the importance of integrity in what they do, so their experience will be better. Helping them to develop a sense of autonomy, uh, in and outside of the classroom, so their experience will be better. Respect for others, because that's truly important, to help the students understand and have a greater experience. Helping them find their passion, to understand the why, that we were talking about earlier, so not only the why, but the passion. And then finally, the importance of service, and we've been talking about the service, the community giving back. So within those core values, our division is laser-focused on making sure that we work hand-to-hand with academic affairs to ensure that students have the best experience. So just a couple examples of that, and one of the ones that I've been really proud of is our, our main integration with our student media area. If you've noticed, over the years, you've had a jambar newspaper that's embedded within student affairs and student experience. But there's a close connection with academic affairs and how students are able to utilize that experience as a classroom of sorts, as a laboratory of sorts, upon this bill. With our jambar TV, we produce a variety of, of recording and opportunities for students can get an experience on campus of building their capacity. We would see students even go to our local news stations and do those type of things, that's important. Our radio station, it provides another opportunity for students to hone their skills, and then later use that into a career. So, within our graphic services area, we help students to develop their portfolios and things like that. Then, the student affairs area, student experience area, that also helps them in the classroom. Our campus recreation area helps students to develop those skills, working with health sciences, community biology. So they have, have there again, that laboratory experience of working in our campus rep area. And then finally, we've got over forty different academic-related student organizations that connect with academic programs that give students those leadership skills that they need. So all of those things are ways that we integrate with the programs and services that we provide, uh, with our students, and to ensure that there's this integration between extracurricular and curriculum activities that go on in the classroom.
So it takes a village, and a village is the leadership working together to move this agenda forward. So, as you know, and as was illustrated in the circular perspective in this framework, there are support areas that stimulate and enable these notions of academic excellence and student success. So, at this point in time, um, we're gonna illustrate a, a few ways of the other vice presidential areas, as we just did with Eddie's area, do just that. So from a division of student success perspective, you're well aware of all the work that Claire and her group does, uh, working really closely with the registrar, with financial aid, with admissions, to make this all work. You've, you've seen the data, you've heard many presentations about the initiatives, you've heard about and seen the successes that have occurred as a result of many of those things. And you hear a little bit more about those successes in the academic excellence and student success area meeting. But most importantly, relative to, uh, the success of any initiative we have, technology's gonna play a huge role, and Neil will talk about that. Our people will play a huge role, Holly will mention that a little bit. So, at this point in time, Holly and Neil, would you please make some comments?
May I also correct that research to the academic?
Yes.
Holly Jacobs, uh, Vice President for Human Resources Legal, and that includes the Equal Employment Opportunity Office. So the focus of the areas, are being louder? No? All right, Holly Jacobs, Vice President for Human Resources Legal, and, uh, including the Equal Employment Opportunity Office. The focus of these areas that are under my divisions, um, and how they relate to the strategic plan is, I think, mostly, you know, going, going to affect the culture that we have at ISU. And one of the, one of the issues that I think specifically we need to work on to, in order, you know, in order to be able to help the students to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here, is to close the communication and transparency gap that we have with the Office of Academic Affairs. And, um, I've seen that since I've been here at ISU. Um, just a sort of a separation of the Office of Human Resources and Academic Affairs. Um, I don't know if you, you know this, uh, Mr. President, but you're the president, some people think the provost heads the whole endeavor. And the reason for that, what, what that does is, you know, the Office of Academic Affairs needs to be synced up with the other administrative offices. And we have a divide partly because the Office of Academic Affairs is actually engaged in doing some human resources work, sending letters to the faculty that are along the lines of HR-type of communications. And so it creates the situation where, you know, the only needs that the Office of Academic Affairs, they're, they're self-contained, and they don't sort of need the other areas. Well, that, that just, especially in a, in our culture with what departmenting, it just just contributes to, you know, a mistrust, basically. And, you know, so we need to really kind of work on closing that gap. And I think we can do that, and I think we have been working on that in ways of more communication from H R, more face-to-face meetings with people in H R, including myself. We've had, you know, recently with the coronavirus situation, we've had some great successes where we have met with myself, with Neil, Ollie, with other people in H R, with employee groups, worked out some very complicated and serious matters that really astonished me that we were able to achieve what we did. And I, I think those were done by sitting down, face-to-face meetings, talking to people, people getting to know each other. And I think that we need to work on those issues with the Office of Academic Affairs as it is so important to achieving the goals that we're talking about here. And so I think the bottom line here is that a higher functioning operation, you know, will lead to a more, higher functioning workforce that will help the students be able to achieve, you know, all of that, achieve their strategic planning.
Thank you. Neil, as Neil makes his way up, let me remind you that coming into last March, we had convened all the directors of all the support areas of the institution, I think three times. So a room three times full of about 90 people, all of them working towards developing for their areas of mission, quality, and attribute statements. We had gotten to the point where everybody had developed those, everybody was going to go back to their local areas and refine those and talk about what they really meant to put them into action. Then we were going to reconvene with representatives from the academic affairs area to see if we've converged appropriately on stimulating and enabling academic success and student success. We kind of got stalled in March with the events that we're all aware of. And just yesterday, as we were talking about reigniting or re-launching that initiative, we thought no better way than to reconnect those conversations from the perspective of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we're going to use that to relaunch those discussions of the support areas. Neil's going to talk a little bit about his area's relationship to stimulating and enabling academic excellence, student success.
Yeah, really, my, my comment, I'm Neil McAllister, my friend in finance. My comments are going to begin mostly to technology innovations that relates to this presentation. But obviously, you know, as an institution or a university, higher learning technology is a forefront of everything we do. I mean, that's not new, news to anybody, but I think the COVID pandemic has really sort of accelerated that a little bit, a lot perhaps, but technology is permeating everything we do, I can learn today. So also, as Ollie mentioned, sort of a cultural shift, and so I think there's a little bit of a cultural shift with regard to moving a little bit more toward technology, a lot more toward technology. And we're seeing some progress there. This is good news. For example, this semester, 85% of our faculty have adopted Blackboard for course management or some learning management type of open source. So that's a big improvement. Still a little bit of room to improve, but that tells me that the culture is in fact starting to embrace all these technology innovations that we do. I really think, as the vice president for finance, you know, I'm going to always segue back to the budget and resources, but, you know, because technology is something that evolves so rapidly and changes so quickly, and we need to be able to perform that, we need to be budgeted and we attach on. So we're in a position to adapt to new technologies. We've been very fortunate, and I'm going to talk later, I work in finance, so it's about how fortunate we are in every space we care about, dollars from the federal government. And we've used a lot of that to invest in our technology, in terms of campus-wide. So that's a very good thing. But going forward, we're going to have to figure out ways to do that without the assistance of the federal government. So that's just something I think we're going to, I need to keep on our radar. Probably stating the obvious, everyone knows how important technology is. But it also kind of feeds into data analytics, which is also another bullet up here. Obviously, we want our decisions to be data-driven, and technology is very critical, a role in that, obviously. And I think we're making a lot of progress with institutional research, synchronizing with our technology division, that we really come up with some better strategy regarding how we're presenting information, how we're going to make decisions.
And as you'll recall, we're not going to optimize student success unless we have foundational excellence in technology supporting that. So Neil's group and Claire's group, and financial aid, registrar, academic programs, the chairs, the teams, have all worked together to redevelop and assure that degree maps are right as we implement degree works, which will make Y S U's degrees work because there will be a roadmap for completing the degree based upon having the courses, being able to be scheduled when the students need them, as the students need them, which will allow for more effective and efficient use of space and people. As you know, we're going to layer on top of that CRM advise. This year, Claire's just instigating that, which will move advising to a more holistic case management type of relationship that'll have lots of triggering opportunities in it. So those are just a few of how technology is going to be so essential to supporting student success. And you've, you've seen the great analytics that are happening now as we think more about how do we change our behavior on the basis of data exploration. From a budget perspective and from an implementing the plan perspective, when you endorse the plan, you endorsed a couple of things. You endorsed that every year we bring a budget to you, you'll get an iPad to report, and we'll discuss it as appropriate. You endorsed that this year, and when the president proposes the fiscal year 22 budget, he will present to you the framework around which we will implement the plan, the starting point for which is illustrated on this slide, three areas that work closely together to deliver on the plan. And you've also said that when you endorse the fiscal year 22 budget, you'll formally endorse key performance indicators, and you'll formally endorse the metrics associated with those lag indicators, because we need the leads to push the lags, so to speak. So more about that as we go through this year. Really, what the plan said is while we've seen our institution as one of opportunity, innovative, and certainly high value, and as the survey results suggested, and as we're proposing to interact with this board this year in a very focused manner, we need to create a multi-year plan that achieves enrollment, that respects our mission, vision, and values, and provides a pathway to fiscal sustainability, academic vibrancy, and regional vitality. And we need to integrate that with the development of marketing, brand, communication strategy. So the reason for this part of the meeting is to engage the board with determining, is that okay? Is how we propose to do it reasonable? What do you think? There are several things that are already underway that will help support this pathway. One is, as you know, we work very closely with E A B on our enrollment and our scholarship strategy. So we'll be able to bring to bear all the knowledge, expertise, and insights that we have from that relationship, and they are extensive. In fact, they're on-campus interacting with our leadership probably two or three times a year to help us learn more about the data, to help inform how we need to change our behaviors towards those things that the data reflects we can improve in. As you know, we're engaged with Bray and Associates to look at markets and programs, major portions of which, led by the provost, will happen this semester. But we're thinking we need some assistance with the notion of determining the brand, developing a communication strategy that's integrated with the brand, that also syncs very closely with E A B and our enrollment work, Bray and our academic program work. How do you put those together for that sustainable and vibrant future? We're proposing that, we're setting the stage for this year-long discussion at this meeting. Perhaps December, we use that meeting to establish the context from data and market perspectives. We're proposing that perhaps in February, we bring in a futurist. We have thought leaders, thought provokers, as we develop the plan. Let's bring a futurist in related to higher education and think about the future. Perhaps in March, associated with the meeting or not, we have an advance, not a retreat, because we're not retreating from anything, we're advancing on our future, and perhaps consider options for the institution's future. And then, considering the board's reaction to those options, we start to integrate the reaction to those options into the fiscal year 22 budget and beyond. So trustee, or Chair Haxted, we're now at the point where we had thought, perhaps, depending on your point of view and those of the trustees and our amount of time, we might have you think about or ask yourselves or speak out loud, why are you, what makes you why I'm proud? Or what do you believe is the value of a Y S U educational experience and degree? So I don't know if you'd like trustees to comment?
Please.
Please enunciate loudly and clearly.
I think I'd just like to start with a question, which is, as we go through this process this year, launching, how are we going to align that perspective, some point greater brand strategy, point market policy, this market step up? How are we going to align this year with the understanding?
I apologize for the interruption, but we can't hear whoever's speaking.
I'll repeat the question. I understand.
Understanding the fact that there's a certain amount of dollars that's going to take to have, so these traditional, you know, market terms that you're going to need to actually give an ROI on this plan. So how does that fall from out here? Because the dollars are going to be significantly portioned, if desired effect, one.
Right. So, yes, so trustee Ryan asked, how are we going to align the outcome of this work with a budget? That's exactly why we're saying that whatever comes out of this work, we need to begin aligning it with the fiscal year 22 budget. So we're going to have to think about, we're going to have to find resources to divert, to reallocate, or to allocate towards this plan in some incremental fashion that makes sense, that we can afford, that we know has an appropriate ROI. So we're well aware of, we're going to have to do it aligned.
You have some great ideas, but that might not be.
Well, that's what we're going to have to do this year.
So you said all.
Well, that's where we're going to get to next, when Shannon talks a little bit about how we might propose going forward with this.
Well, I'll start with, really, what I read in this slide there. When I went through the materials, what makes, what makes, as a trustee, what makes you why I'm proud, and what is the value of your degree and I reflect upon what I've got? With the material, I tried to think about, I hope I'm not too close to the question, but I tried to think about, what is it that as a trustee does make me why I'm proud, or make me why I'm proud? And what is the value of your degree? You know, as, as a trustee, again, my very first degree that I received was from here at Youngstown State University. Both of my sons received their degrees here at Youngstown State University. I, I was a first-generation college grad, so I understood the value of how a college experience and degree can truly help you change your mind. And, and, you know, and I think that's what makes me proud, why I'm proud. But beyond that, as a trustee, to have an opportunity to be a part of helping shape the future of an institution that you know owes that same experience and outcome to every single student that comes to this campus, is rewarding. And knowing that you have the ability to help influence and shape that and, and, you know, set strategic guidance and protection around those types of things is extremely rewarding. But I would want every student who comes through our organization to have that same experience and the same kind of successes with all of it. Likewise, I would want every faculty member to feel proud and engaged and feel this is the best place to work. So we want to not only be the best place for students to come and change their minds, but the best place for faculty to come, to really know that they are truly making a difference. So, and, and so that's what makes me why I'm proud.
Thank you, Ollie. I think Andy Howard said at Board Meeting last week, that we think about why I'm proud once the body runs, we just look and see the accomplishments. And I am sitting at our board meetings, here for our faculty and students, and I'm always in awe, I have a wonderful student, it's the mom. And so I think if more people understood that's the sort of achievements that come out of the university, people will understand that. Any other comments, as a trustee, why you why I'm proud? Okay.
I'll give it a try. But I, I agree that our alumni, our alumni are our best billboards, they're our best advertising. And I want to start back, my parents are both college graduates, but not from Y S U. But they raised a family here in Youngstown, and after World War II, my dad, while practicing law full-time in Youngstown, taught in the Youngstown Law School at night. Later on, after the law school was closed, he taught business law in the School of Business at Youngstown College. And as a kid, I remember coming up here and doing a class with him on occasion. And then later on, I and three of my siblings graduated from Y S U, all did fairly well. My wife and her two sisters graduated from Y S U, brother-in-law from Y S U. And I, I take pride in the, in the value of Y S U, combination of its excellence, of programming and faculty education. So the excellence, the accessibility, and the affordability, combined to me, and for a broad section of my family and my in-laws' family, to make a better future for all. I was happy to follow a little bit of my dad's footsteps, not only as a lawyer, but as a part-time member of the faculty here at Y S U to, to help shape those students of the future in courses and education. So I thank Y S U for the opportunities based on its accessibility, its excellence, and its affordability.
I like that, I feel like what Scott Howard said, and Chair Haxted, about the orientation, they talked about, I think Chair Haxted said, a lot of people's experience that we're talking to, he said, well, I'm studying my kid to X college, and they're paying $40,000 tuition every year. Well, why? Because there is something in our backyards that has the same opportunity that all of these other institutions and universities have. And I think people are just not blind to it, but maybe they're not even aware of it, or they're just unaware that the same things that all of these other institutions and universities offer can also be found here. You don't have to go too far behind it, especially for the remaining students that go through the hall, though, it's right about there.
And how do people understand? I find out, I'm a Jack Highwell from Ohio State University. So you're in a classroom, Ohio graduate and all that, I never, at any point, felt underprepared in a new issue of form. In fact, I felt extremely well-prepared coming out of Y S U. The other thing I'll never forget is that, so I'm a daughter immigrant, and first-generation college. And I'll never forget when my dad would tell people where I was called. He wanted to push me back, push me by nine seconds. Just that state, very proud of state, daughter was young in that state. And I thought, huh, it was still that little pride. And it wasn't just because I was a college student, where I was in college. He was very proud of that. So I would make sure that everybody feels that.
I think one way is to tell them stories. Every person around this table has why I should just be like. My story is of first generation. I have a crucial attraction to my master's degree. And I know categorically, and I could say it to every person, I would never be who I am or where I am today without one of these people. And everyone of you have had a story, a story of relatives, a story of own experience. Those are the kinds of things people need to hear. We certainly have our shared responsibilities, no one discovers that. But it's those heartfelt new stories that help people identify and say, that's me. That, that, well, that was me a long time ago, but I can really identify with them. So I think one of the most important things, we've got faculty, they're so extraordinary and accomplished, and they have stories to tell. We have students who are here currently that have stories to tell. Great stories, why they never go anywhere but Youngstown State University. They are grounded, it's just their home. So I think when we hear those kinds of stories, we realize not only that we identify with them, but we are involved in this great enterprise, this great mission of the future. There's not a hope that we can do about what's happened in the past. We need to learn about it, we need to understand it, we need to see our faults, we need to see what we failed. We cannot sit there, we have to go forward, we've got to offer them something. We've got to see a big picture. And the better we each do that in any capacity that we happen to be in, provost, vice president, faculty member, board trustees, the better we do that, the better our story goes.
My question about, look at any most successful companies, from a marketing standpoint, that's good, stories, it's odd that trustees, they're very important in marketing normally, especially with, I think, our target audience, someone wants to assume a lot of business and comes to us. So you know, other way to do that, you know, stories. I technically just do stories, this way. Don't see like, marketing can't end just these last 15 minutes conversation, but I think it's important to go forward, finish this. Got to keep it simple. I think too often we kind of get caught up in all these things that we need to, in order to make effective decisions, and brand, come up with a brand strategy, all these different things. But I think almost time, actually launches, we get too caught up in the candidates of these things, don't focus on touch, resonating, connecting with people that were at least at a, over at college. And they probably, you talk about branding, branding is, we think, brands are consumer things. So what is our, what is our consumer point of view, maybe our message? If we think they are branded, whatever it wants, whatever we want, we put them in. So thanks.
It's funny, but I heard that maybe branding, I think of the small little handbag, it's big by eye, maybe the person understands, that is not, you know, that's not your picture. So I would say, what is our story? What's the YSU story? That would really do exactly what you said, it would help us tell that story simply, honestly, integrity, and people will identify with that. Well, and that, that story, that story has to be true to be strong and to reach hearts and minds of the people that have a greater care for our people. Yeah, that's a good, that's just such a, such a critical piece of it. So that it really touched the hearts, touched the minds, and yeah, that's the place, oh, that's the place I did it though, that's the place I joined it all though. That's what creates that connection.
So the other thing is that you have to be able to identify, identify with, see themselves in that, see that future.
I think that's, well, actually President Presses, schools and other places created such a lot of, they're not that, and it's recorded down. So we've got to have, so there's a reason why people are speaking well is able to actually see this. Which is why I made a comment on branding now.
Yep.
I was going to make a comment, trying to brand right now, President Press.
Getting back to your comment earlier about people, they don't know what's in their backyard here at, at YSU. It reminds me of whether it's an accountant, a lawyer, a doctor, other professional, too often people may think, for expertise, they need to go 50 miles away. While that person's 50 miles away may have the same expertise and ability as those right here at home, it's how do we turn that focus back to home? To let them know, we have that expertise in our faculty, we have that expertise in our students, all that excellence that's working. Too often, as you said, we look, we don't look beyond what's right in front of us. But we look too often beyond what's right in front of us and won't appreciate what's at home. So all those things wrap in together to tell our story, to put it in a nutshell, to attract people and remind them what we have, who we are, what we do, so well.
I appreciate everything you did. I think we've got one of the options to go off the nine-nine year of the demographic. If you study the demographic in the Northeast, it's declining. Willst we develop this plan and be one of the top stories? Stories that resonate with people outside of our district area? The only way we're going to survive and thrive is pull in students from outside that have been around the area, who we've been very successful with. So I think we need to hold that in line, our stories are wonderful, we help a story, have to be able to tell it more national or larger, deeper, for the faculty.
That's the next one, and what makes us different. And that's what we have to come, we have to talk about the character relevance. What, what can distinguish us or give us a competitive advantage, we just come here. And so we identify what we stand for, or something we can do on, or do a start for this, or buy a new work for this. Those are the sorts of things that people go, hey, that's different there. And, you know, why should somebody else work from here?
I'll tell you, one, one-
It's like they were the winning family, played a major role in that, right? You know, have a property here, a number of, a lot of attachment, or they're working mathematics and so forth. So, so that's a story that needs to attract other attention outside of this. My son, who's an engineer, a scientist, that's appearing, school in one nation, you know? So it's, it's, I think that story, and that's one of the reasons why I think we have to pay attention to, and I'm going to, I'm going to use that word again, diversity. Diversity of our faculty, diversity of our student body, diversity, because it's trying to be strong enough that there are stories that all kinds of people can relate to. You know, I will tell you, the person that, that helped me have my success, that was on this university, was Alfred, Professor Alfred White. I would not be sitting here today if it wasn't Professor Alfred White. Because I was struggling with the fact that, you know, I had, I had for all of my life gone to, I mean, for my great, a predominantly white school, didn't know my history, my culture, or anything. He helped me find it, because I didn't felt like I belonged. Otherwise, I was ready to get up from here because I just didn't belong here. So that was an experience that was created by someone that I could see myself in and began to feel like I could really succeed. And I think that's just so critical, and it has to be kind of bashing, and have to have those people. The great mathematician professor, the engineering leader, the person that's sitting on the board of health, the board health person, you know? Those faculty and, and structures that we build will be the additional stories that we need to talk to people, all of them.
I, I think Mike should-
Okay. I was just going to say, you talk about branding, I was thinking about something that Dr. Howard talked about, some of the voices that people are bringing up and educating. And I was thinking about a conversation I had earlier this week about coming to YSU and the coach that we had at the time, more focused, football was a part of what he was focused on, but it was about developing the individual. So of all the lessons that we learned in football, there were all these life lessons, right? So I can tell you what, every interview I had where I was inexperienced, but I got the job, fixed on some of the tools that YSU gave me that were outside of just the education. Not going to mention the coach's name, he's not a compliment. But, but realistically, when you think about that, to me, that extinguishes you, sets you apart, it's more than just the education. And as a parent, I want to know that my kids are going to learn more than just the book knowledge, right? Tell me how you're going to, you know, get through rough times and, you know, about adversity and about honor and integrity, all those things that make this community great. But it is something that you're going to, that if I'm in Pennsylvania or in California, I want my kids to be a part of it. I want to know that they're being armed with some of those weapons or tools and instruments that they can use, that takes it further than just what I learned in the book. Because I don't know, I'll assume you, but a lot of what I learned in college didn't apply to my life outside. I changed my major and went someplace different. And the things that, those peripheral tools that were given to me, that was huge. So we talk about branding, I just think that's, that's as important as anything.
Is that why I did the big college, I guess I'd ask, you know, I think back to my aunt Brain, my whole point was, I don't want to go to college where I don't want to be held up and then get canceled. That was my whole focus. So how do I know, when you're looking at marketing with the students, you've got to give them, we can say that now, I agree with you on all of those points. Because that was a student that I used to see, how would you get it in their minds?
I agree. The minute you what they say, when we talk about that retention, right? I can tell you that, if I'm being honest with you guys, when President Trump got here to Youngstown State, I was ready to transfer. Didn't want to come to this school. I went here because my brother was going here, so on and so forth. When I stayed here and had someone who poured all that into me, all the other stuff, right? I was locked, locked and loaded, right? That's, that's what I'm saying, that's why I think this is important. And then it gets back to the stories that you want to share with people, letting them know there's much more out there than, everyone can provide the education, but not at the level we provide, and also the education that's outside of the book knowledge as well.
I think, I think we can do, we can tell those stories from the alumni, from the students, from here and from on, great things, but let's talk about what's worrying my heart today. President Rick's food service, a lot of it is, the obvious team, they won the national championship last year. Actually were, but re-rec, you know, it's a Rhodes Scholar for the Youngstown State University Law School, we can't say that. So I think that's, we have to, we have to know, right? We have a good past, present's great, and a future for these students who are basically not, that's something we need to talk as well. But I agree with everything that was, I understand. Maybe one of the big reasons I wanted to be a part of YSU, because I felt I could solve the background of Youngstown State University, for what it did for me. Need to say that for Ohio State, that was a school, I mean, they're students from overall country, not like Ohio State, USC, or whatnot, you know? I feel like I would, I feel well prepared. I mean, I didn't feel like I could see, and basically my faculty, it was a great problem. I was there, I announced back to you, great things, so I had something at Youngstown State that I wanted, wanted.
Yeah. Can I invite Dr. Cooper to make a couple of comments from the faculty's perspective?
Just a couple of things. First of all, faculty just love being here because they see that they shape the future. But I'll tell you why, I have to tell you why, why I'm proud. But actually, I'd like to tell you all why I'm proud. You know, I've talked to a lot of students to try to get them to recruit here, try to get them to enroll here, and, you know, occasionally Ohio State pops up, right? And to be honest with you, in my classroom, you're not allowed to wear any logo material of Ohio State. And you're in particular trouble if you wear something from Ohio State. I'm in trouble. Anyway, I tell these students, I say, there's really no difference between these big schools that you think of and Youngstown State. I said, if we got a game of academic football together, and I put the best YSU faculty on, on the field, and you took the best faculty from Ohio State on the field, and we played a game, at worst, we come out with a tie, we probably beat them. The only difference between these big schools and YSU is they have a second and third seed. We just have an all-star first seed, so that's what the battle will be.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, a lot of great comments on spring here, how the board feels about the faculty. I often would ask, you know, any year, I see around Youngstown State Board, what happens and stuff, I say, well, I can say, I'm just kind of, it's gone through a lot of tough times for us. And I say, actually, you know, it's very exciting to be part of Youngstown State. And, you know, part of that is because I think there's pretty leadership here. I know everything Jim's done, it's like, it's been very successful, being a part of something that Jim's tried to drive and bring out, it's very exciting for me, I think, for the board. But also, I've found the last three years of board is very engaged. And I think what's really exciting is what we're talking about here, which is, look, this country is going through some tough times. The university system in this country is going through some real tough times. I think we talked a little bit about that in the setup to the room. There's no doubt, I mean, whether you're a small college or a big state university around this country, you're under a lot of pressure. But the nice thing here, the thing that really excites me when I come through materials and talk to the group, is I think this group's really excited about maybe changing. And that's what's got to happen, that's what's got to happen across this whole country. You're going to see over the next couple of years, hundreds of more colleges and universities starting to move in. This university has a chance. This is, one of the obvious, this is exciting here, this is really the heart and soul of mine in Youngstown, greater, greater Youngstown here. So there's probably no other college in the country that is as important to this region as this college is, this university is. And so that's very exciting. But, you know, I think our willingness to take on a strategic change, we have to drive change across the whole university. I do all the things we're talking about, university inclusion, but also finding our jobs. You know, we need to not only get our students, make our students successful, we need to make our faculty successful. You know, good faculty, successful faculty breeds successful students, and then attracts more students, itself really forces, you know, or having good facilities, so. You've got to have all of those things together. I think we're doing a lot of those good things, right? We now need to really put hard on what's going to, what's changing in the world out there, where we're at today, what are the big changes we need to be, happen. Act, to me, is what's really exciting. We're just sitting around talking about, oh, we've got a pretty new university, we've got a lot of graduates, and is it nice? I don't need to show, what's exciting is we are trying to make some big changes here. It's exciting to be part of it. The EDC, we have Paul's on, and we have him there. I think some of the programs, what is, what is Youngstown State really going to be great at in the next years? To me, that really makes it exciting. It should make people, it's really exciting, it should attract businesses here, it should attract a lot of students in the university. So I think if we can, we can make all that happen, this will be a very successful one.
Right. We've got to do different directions on what everyone said. In those six years ago, when we started talking to the students, just like all of you that plenty are, our faculty is as good as any faculty anywhere. But what the students told me was, this place didn't look like the other place, and there weren't the things to do, and those things are important as well. And so they were really the impetus for a lot of the things that have gone on in the last four, six years. So I think that gives us a chance. So I think that gives us a chance to go to Chuck's reality, which is we have lived on these five counties. And these five counties are not as many people buying Panera sandwiches, right? And not as many people, they're going to be going to college. And it goes back to your storytelling a little bit. For a hundred years, we lived on the five counties. And so really no one in Columbus ever hears any Youngstown State stories, or Cincinnati, or surprisingly, Georgia County, Iowa County, the range county, because they don't know anyone that went there. So who do you hear the stories from? We hear all the stories, but we all live here and we've all, you know, experienced that. So making sure we do make great, maybe bold, maybe tough decisions going forward to be able to attract without people knowing our story, because no one in Pittsburgh knows our story. Much as we might say, this is a wonderful place, so is Carnegie Mellon, and so is it, so is all the other places. So that reality of our demographics, along with the reality of what maybe COVID has taught us in terms of, you know, we can learn other ways than we've been doing in higher ed for so long, and, and all of those things. When people ask me, you know, you've been at a lot of different places, what makes Youngstown State stand out? I grew up on a small college campus. I was at the bigger colleges there is, I won't mention yet. But the differences here is Youngstown State has the embassy of where I went to college and where I grew up, but it has the program strength and opportunities of the big places. Now, maybe not as many different ones. To me, the key is going to be which ones are you going to decide to differentiate yourself? So that you can make up for your lack of demographics. We're still going to serve the people who, this is clearly the best choice to them, and they've heard all the stories of success. People in the five county area have heard, everyone they bump into has a success story that they've heard. But how are you going to attract outside of that? That's, in my mind, definitely the key to the future. And it's going to take some difficult decisions as to what we decide we're going to cast our lots. Because we won't be able to afford to market in every area. We're just not going to be able to do that. Where will we be able to do that? So I think that's the, that's where we need the discussions and input, uh, not just from us, but also from our students and prospective students. One of the other things that the students said way back when, five, six years ago, was, we need more really good students here. And really good ones, because, you know, I'll go there, you know, Helen Lance coming here from Ursuline? I'm coming here because she's the best student in class. Well, I think Amy Gossatino and, and the honors college growing from two hundred and fifty people to twelve hundred and sixty-six, or whatever it is now. There's a lot more really good students coming here, more stories. We'll get told it's going to take a while. It's a long time for those stories to catch, but, uh, that's the beauty of this discussion. But we're going to have to really be, uh, have a high batting average on our decisions.
We said, one of the things that we talked about, Chuck George was talking about, well, was, you know, I had been working with the local services. One of the things that, that we notice when we usually go into certain areas to pull people that we haven't pulled before out of the five counties. And Claire would agree with this, once we get them to campus, we suck. I mean, they, they, once they get to campus, once they engage with us, we got it. The issue I think that we need to work on is making sure that we deliver on, on that engagement, that promise that we made and that process. Sometimes there's barriers within our institution that keeps us from delivering on both the promises. So if we can fix from a person's viewpoint standpoint, from removing barriers standpoint, we can deliver on the promise. Because once we get them, then I think the stories come in, because when my recruiters go out and they go in these areas they have been in before, they tell these stories, and those stories are what hooks them, and then when they get here, our engagement will sell them. And so if we find a way to kind of put those together recruitment aspect, I think we can get there. But we've got to deliver on what we promise, and that's the piece.
Can I say also, I think on the service lines, I think that's so critical. But in addition to that, um, I think, you know, what can set us apart on that? Is I come to Youngstown State and I not only learn, but I do. As an employer, the first question that you ask, and a, a potential candidate, is what's your experience like? You have experience in this, you know, or you're talking about new grads that may not have the experience if they went and learned it. And, you know, you're, you're hiring someone that has had that experience. But how can that set us apart at Y S U so that they know, I don't just come there and learn, I come here and also do? Whether that's through public structure, internships, that every student has a place that they have the ability to experience in their field? Whether it's in how we hire them to serve a role of, of, you know, assistance to a V I or, um, the honors college, which does a tremendous job around that, of sending everyone out and having a summer internship kind of a program? Well, imagine if we had that, not just with that group, but for those who are most underserved and in need as well. Imagine what that would look like as we are able to then sell that as part of the story that you come, you not only learn, but you have these experiences and, and have these, um, working experiences to title it that, that allow me to come out and say, I haven't just learned this, I don't just have a piece of paper to show you this, but I've actually worked in this field. And here are the kinds of projects and initiatives that I've done. But these are the ways that I think as a brand is how we need to figure out how we sell ourselves.
I, I just, I was asking, uh, you said.
Alan, can you speak up please?
I was just going to ask a question, uh, people buy out, or I'm just, uh, a faculty, do you have, do you have to make a comment? I'm just interested. Why you made it, probably the fact that there's still a certain amount of unawareness, even if it's a high power. Relative to what a great school is. Why, why did you have to say that? Also, can you actually, this, make a picture of it? It was processed, it was, uh, sure, some of those people.
So I grew up in the area, I was born in twenty nineteen, I was married, and I knew that from my graduating class, a lot of students wouldn't be able to have time to say, where are we going to college? A lot of them felt that, in their minds, they had this mindset that Y S U is superior in, in your university and institution compared to anywhere else. It's big name schools, like, that, you know, were more, they were further, or they must have been opportunity in Youngstown. And I, I don't know if there wasn't enough engagement, because I, in, in my eyes, I feel like I almost thought Y S U were very needy in their own communities. Maybe you always saw it happening, but in other people's perspectives, I think they were very blind to the fact, or they felt superior to the fact that they don't know what she's doing. And I, I really don't know why, but from my own personal perspective, the global, that's what I admit is a lie, that's what I admit.
I think one of our brand. But it's the engagement that was grown with the living here, all the students, I know from my, like, home. You know, there, there's a lot of people, it seems like the younger people, well, I've really never been in it. So if I go to Youngstown, I'm still here. I want to go to Miami, I want to go to somewhere else. And I think we have to, we have to get over that. Some of those aren't even the best, right? But I think the engagement with the high schools has been very good, uh, trying to coax them to get, to get their friends somewhere else. But it, it is getting out, and I think, scoring the best success, plus the engagement on campus, the more, even if you live in, you know, when my daughter came here, she, when the coordinator was over, she was there, and, and she was one of the younger ones, who didn't come here, but. You're five miles away, you're way from home again. And I mean, I think that's part of the campus environment. And what, what you guys have been doing here, to have more activity, more rec centers in that opening. I think that maybe, you know, will get it to where, well, if they don't have this, or they don't have that. And the other part might be, I know, youngest ones, four years, here's your plan, you're done. Reworked. If there's a way you can make sure, I think the economics to the family that's going to say, you know, where do you want to go? And if you go here, I'm going to pay for your school, or in Dax, I don't know, I'm just going to take, you know, even the charts. What, you know, how many graduates in four years, five or six? If we can offer the program that here's the classes, and I know people change their majors. But if you can offer the classes and say, you're out here in four years, and the school, we want to lock your tuition for four years. I mean, you teach summer school, or you go long day, you're going to pay what you're going to pay. But those type of things are a big part of, I think, marketing, or the, uh, story, the brain, or jabbing. But, but the, uh, I, I think those can be very positive, what I'm hearing around. But, but it is, it's the trust, it's what we get from the students. What do you guys really think? Too bad, listen, you're the partner, you're, you're the customer, we got to listen to our customers.
So when I was in high school, that was definitely like, I had this idea, because Y S U kind of has this reputation of anyone can go there. It doesn't matter, your brains are, you know, that in. So being in the upper end of like your class academically, it's like, oh, well, if anybody can go there, I don't want to go there. And my senior high class, I had twelve, fourteen colleges. One of them was not Y S U, to be honest. I didn't apply, I did rolling admission in March. And I ended up attending solely, it was basically because of financial reasons. I'd applied to like a case, Ohio State Purdue. And I think Ohio State gave me like three thousand dollars in scholarships, and Y S U, my first year, I was, I think I got a hundred and ninety-five dollars to go here. Like, I didn't pay them, they paid me. But then, yeah.
Please speak again, Mike.
So, well, like, once I got on campus, and I really realized that it was the right choice, and, because it is like, we do have all the benefits of having a large, campus and a large faculty, but we are in a smaller, you know, so you kind of get the best of both worlds. I do think housing, we can talk about housing, or drawing students from outside of the area. I think housing is a big issue, because, like, we have been building a lot of new complexes, but the new complexes are also very fancy and very expensive. Like, the, the lobster just went up, the lowest level room is, I believe, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for one person. And I know a lot of students and friends of mine who are looking for their last two years, they're moving to Boardman. Like, they're not from the area and they can't afford to live on campus anymore. Or if they do live in the edge of the envelope, you have to take out extra loans, just to be able to stay for something. That's definitely something if you're trying to draw people in from the area, because we do have this brand through the affordable school. Like, it has to stay affordable.
Yeah, so this has been a really super, super conversation, exactly what we had hoped or anticipated would occur. Shannon is going to give us a, a perspective on how we'll take these next steps. Shannon?
Thank you. First of all, thank you. Unfortunately, we had to quarantine, so I do appreciate this platform to be able to, um, talk to each of you. So one of the things I decided to do, which is kind of recap what someone already said. Um, and the idea is that, you know, many of the experiences that were shared, as the president indicated, that, you know, we have, um, a wider geographical kind of section of campus and stuff that is growing, which is fabulous. Um, you know, colleagues, both Brian Smith and Eddie Howard, talked about the idea on how we are enhancing the experience and the things that we're doing to make sure that for the student's aspect, it's, it's obviously better. It, it was interesting for me to be able to listen to each one of you of talking about why you are Y and proud. And, you know, sometimes, and, um, you know, individuals will say, well, you know, that brand, Y and Proud, is, is getting a little old. That's not our brand. And so, you know, to take a look at what truly what a brand is, is everything that each one of you around the room discussed. It's, it's what you've experienced, um, it's what you feel, it's the impact you either had or are currently having. Um, and that, all of those pieces together come together to form what our brand is. You know, working with, with colleagues, um, you know, Brian Smith and, and Eddie Howard, and, and taking a look at right now of the efforts of E A B and Gray, and how those aspects of information are coming together. And what we're going to be able to, to grab from those to also be able to put is part of this, this brand marketing. The last time that we did this was in two thousand and nine. We hired a company by the name of Simpson and Scarborough. They did, you know, they did an impact study of three hundred students. There were prospective students and then three hundred parents in, in the same category of students who were looking at Youngstown State University. And, and from that sampling frame, they were able to do some quantitative research and get it back to the campus. Again, it was two thousand and nine. And, and some of the aspects that came forward at that time was that Youngstown State University was seen as affordable. It was seen as accessible, um, and it was a quality education. I, I'm not going to be surprised if those are some of the same attributes that come forward. But, you know, to kind of lean on something that trustee Seals had indicated, that, you know, she had said that, you know, that, I think, it is difficult to hear. But i- if I, if I kind of somewhat paraphrase, and hopefully I'm in the right ballpark at least. But the idea that, you know, a lot of our students and stuff, uh, walk away with, with internships and the possibilities. And, and how can we intensify that, and how can we change that, and how can we make that better? That's something that when we do this brand, um, research and stuff and come back with the data, as I've talked to other colleagues and, and their input also, that's when we are able to make those small pivotal changes to make sure that if there's something there that we want to increase on how we are perceived within the community, that we're able to do so. You know, President Tressel had indicated that for umpteen years, that we've really looked at our five county area. Uh, and that has been our backyard for our enrollment. The nice thing is, is that with the increased apartments that are across campus, we also have the ability to not only attract students because of our quality education, because of our dedicated faculty and staff, but also because of the increased footprint of campus and being able to do so and to attract those students. That takes dollars. And so I, I believe, or I think that's where probably trustee Alan was going, because he has had conversations with, you know, our director of marketing, Ross Marone, about that one, that, you know, we need to take a look at it. And, and as President Tressel has said, and we have had conversations, we then need to lean on E A B and what their information is provided to us of where we can make the greatest impact and where we have the most concentrated group of students that are based upon what the brand is that we have and what we are able to, to offer to those students to make the largest impact. That's when we'll be able to go in, um, with the marketing dollars that we do have, to be able to see the impact study and such. Mike, are you with the screen? Can I, first of all, are there any questions that I can help with any of that? Great. Okay. So if we move to this next one, um, what we had taken a look at and, and what we had talked about is it, what's in front of you is just a quick timeline. And so what the thought process is, is that with, um, hopefully the, you know, the, the buy-in of, of the board of trustees and the ability to move forward with an R F P, what do we look like and, and how do we do that market research? The nice thing is, is that we are going to be pulling on the data that's from E A B. Um, it looks like we'll have. It looks like we'll have, you know, a slide deck of data and such that will be presented to us from Gray, to also be able to put forward as kind of this third approach, to be able to look at, at kind of our brand marketing. The idea, and it wasn't by accident, but when we're taking a look at this timeline, it's really based on our Board of Trustees meetings also. And so, our hope and desire is to get something together so that we are able to bring the research, and we're able to somewhat complete that part of the process by December, so that at the December Board of Trustees meeting, we can engage each one of you on where we are at that point, and what information has come back to us. If you continue through that guideline between January and March, and then with the March Board of Trustees meeting, it'll be the implementation. And I'm going to lean on something that my colleagues and I have talked about, and, and I think, you know, Eddie had brought to the table, and that's that engagement, that once we get students on campus, we can sell them. And I think one of the positive things through COVID is that, you know, we had to very quickly hit the ground running with what we were able to do to be able to provide a platform of information, and, and a video standpoint of being able to do those, those tours and such on campus. And so, what we learned is that, yes, we want them to come to campus, but we need to have a dual platform to be able to get those students, especially if they're from outside the area. And so, when students are, you know, I, I've got a senior right now at Youngstown State University, and so, I could tell you, most of her information gathering is based on what she can find on the web. It's not always the in-person when they do that type of research, because it is so accessible. And so, part of the implementation process with the advertising and marketing, and making sure that we can engage our students, is going to be on multi-different platforms, and how we're able to do that with the, with the best input and impact. April to June, as you guys can see, that's when we want to go live with our marketing strategies, again, in, in concert with the Board of Trustees meeting. Again, July to September, we're going to be reviewing it. I, I think the big thing is, is that, you know, as we indicated back in 2009, and it was before many of us, my, my team in marketing communications, myself was actually at the table, but one thing that we do think that we need to do, is that we need to repeat that market research. So, when the research comes to us, and we're able to take a look at it between, well, most likely by the end of December, the middle of December, we need to be able to see, where do we want to tweak it? What changes do we want to make? You know, we, we can't come out with a blanket statement and just say, this is our new brand, and everyone's going to buy it and believe it. It's going to be those little pivotal changes that we're going to be able to, to be able to make, to be able to, to look at not only the, the academic side of it, but the experience side of it. And then again, give ourselves that time so that we can make those changes, and then again, with that repeat research, that we can make sure that we're in alignment with what Gray has indicated to us, we're in alignment with E A B has indicated to us, and then also the brand marketing, to be able to make sure that we're making the, the largest impact as possible. All right, I was told I had to wrap up because we were close to the beginning of the next 11:30 meeting, but can I answer any questions, or is there any thought processes that I can bring back? Hey, Mike, if I'm still live, I can hear absolutely nothing now, so I'm not sure what happened.
Provost Smith wanted to make sure we had that in there, so the board had a really much better sense of what Gray and Associates brings to the table relative to the academic program enhancement and effectiveness initiative. So, that gives you a really good sense of, of how they'll support the success of that program, linked to our interactions with E A B, related to enrollment and scholarships, but then connects to what Shannon just talked about, making sense of it all so we can tell the story.
And yet, we've all talked about how critical that is, so where is that cassette in the future, that every student that leaves gets a exit, if you have, I mean, exit?
So, there's two, there's two challenges in I RIT, the lower opportunity, the, the problem. So, it's getting students to reply, for example, a student graduates, think of the private student, as they change jobs, over time, your, your database is more errors and more errors and more errors. Another way is when students choose to leave, they'll, they'll send us, and they'll say, you know, I'm, I'm laying in checks for a good time on top. Now, some of it we do know, and we know, for example, there's this clearinghouse database, they don't ask the students, we can see where they went. And so, we have a number of ways of pulling that data, so they may show up, so, at some of the universities, they can infer, they can give you someplace else, and that's why they do. So, I, I just, just open communication, you certainly have room to improve, and maybe strive to be better in that area, but it's really hard, and students self-expose, particularly in the, in the circumstances when a student chooses to leave.
Thank you. All right, this is under back, tab seven, 2021 for the E schedule. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and let's take five, ten minutes, right?
Definitely take 10 minutes, so we can reset for better sound, please.
Perfect, thank you.
Karen? We can end the streaming at the moment?